Okay, everybody ready?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening. I called to order the August meeting of the Florence City Planning Commission and on behalf of the commissioners and the planning staff, I want to issue a hearty welcome to all of you out there in the audience that this is the people's business and y'all being here and participating, it just makes it all worthwhile for us. I would like to start out our meeting this morning with the invocation or this afternoon. And Mr. Moses, if you will do that, please.
Okay, good morning, glad to. I do allow you, want to thank you for another gathering here today for the goodness and for the well-being for the citizens, not ourselves, but the citizen of this city. These are the blessed essence in your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Moses. I tell you, between you and our missing commissioners, y'all have the gift for sure. Just for the public's reference, we, as commissioners, got an email from Ms. Elaine regarding an issue that we're going to have to vote on to get on the agenda tonight. The applicant for something that we've been discussing for the last two months, the two applicants here, welcome. They and their attorney have asked that we get on the agenda. And as Ms. Elaine explained to the commissioners, state law requires that if we can add something to the agenda, it has to be within 24 hours of the meeting announced to the public. And also, we as commissioners have to vote to add it to the agenda. And it has to be a two-thirds vote to add it to the agenda. So for us to go into our normal process of approving the minutes and then getting into each one of the items, I would like to put a vote before the commissioners are asked for a vote, by adding this, and by the way, the applicants and the attorney, oh, you're not their attorney? But he's still a darn good attorney.
He is an attorney.
That was a free plug, you can give me $10. Okay, but so for us to do that, as commissioners, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, so I might do the math on two-thirds, so I need, I need five to add into the agenda. And then the planning department will explain what has happened since last month, we deferred an issue regarding that Oakland Avenue convenience store, we deferred it to this month, and apparently there may be a solution. And so consequently, before we can get into it, we have to vote it on to the agenda. I've said that three times. So I would like a show of hands of the commissioners that are willing to add this to the agenda tonight, and all those in favor, raise your hand, please. All those against? One, no. So we have our two-thirds, and so we will, I think you said it was queued up first, so let's get to the regular agenda, and that would be approval of last month's minutes. The commissioners have received their packet, they've had a chance to review and determine if there was any corrections. I did want to make one correction, and it's a severe minimum one, but it had to do with the starting of the meeting, Mr. Moses was asked to give the indication, I think it, it was someone else that gave that, and I think that was, it was Mr. Piccato. So if you could just amend the minutes that Mr. Piccato gave the implication, right? All right, so with that, I'll call for a motion.
Move, will you accept the minutes?
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a second. This is a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Is there any discussion? Any none, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those against? It is announced. All right, so we are going to jump to, all of the commissioners got a revised agenda, and it's actually PC 2021-27, which is probably number four or five, we're going to do that first, because I think it is queued up as being for them to discuss. So, did you get that, Mr. Moses? It's 2021-27.
I got so much, all of a sudden to me, you know, just handed to me today, and I like to read over it before I vote on anything.
It is, it's this, and then this is the old, this is the new. Well, all it is is just kind of, if we, if we elected to vote and put it on the agenda, it is just an item on the agenda. We're not, okay. Staff report, please. Mr. Dudley, good evening.
Thank you. Yes, and, and just procedurally, you know, this has to do with the Oakland Avenue rezoning, and Planning Commission does have the ability, when the property owner is either required by like a townhome development or a subdivision, or in this case, a land development project, where they are volunteering to add deed restrictions or restrictive covenants to a property, Planning Commission does have the ability to allow the city to enforce certain deed restrictions or certain covenants. So when they're appropriate to land use and/or specific to the design or the Unified Development Code. So with that being said, at the last meeting, when we were discussing the changes to the CR district, which is when Planning Commission, or City Council rather, sent that back to Planning Commission to look at the CR district as it related to the city overall, but it was specific to the Oakland Avenue rezoning, the case that was before them, the thought of, or the concept of deed restrictions for that lot came up. So we met with the property owners, staff did, later that week, subsequent to that meeting, and discussed that with them, discussed what that looked like, and presented to them what the concerns of the community were, what the concerns of, you know, they were here, they were at the public hearing, they've been very involved. And in doing so, they presented a set of restrictive covenants that has been handed to you, and I'll share my screen as well. And in this document, you know, they do outline the parcels that are proposed for rezoning. That's the parcel one, parcel two, and parcel three, which are the three zones that are before City Council at this time for rezoning. And they then go on to outline the uses that can be prohibited on that side. And you'll see that's on page two of the restricted covenants, and it's down next to the bottom. And number one is there shall be no private clubs on the premises. And number two is the property owner is prohibited from selling alcohol for onsite consumption. And number three is the city of Florence shall have the right to enforce the covenants in accordance with section 4-14, 3.2C of the City of Florence Unified Development Code. And that is just what I outlined, that in the Unified Development Code that gives Planning Commission the ability to approve, and the city the ability to enforce these land codes. And with that said, if, you know, this would not be recorded until such time that the property would be rezoned by City Council, and at that time, the deed restrictions would go into play. So it essentially outlaws any private clubs or onsite alcohol consumption, which would exclude bars or clubs or anything of that nature. And the code in and of itself outlaws liquor stores at that location. So that was another concern, but that's already in place in the, in the current zoning code without any changes.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Any questions from the commissioners?
I have a question. I hear you said there would be no private club on the premises, and no selling alcohol.
No, it's on premise consumption.
Yeah, yeah. But when we came last month, we had this covenant, I did this, gave you this, you know, they made their own covenant, because I know last month when we were talking, no matter, really couldn't tell us anything, we didn't see nothing in paper. And I noticed today, we got it written, so this was done wing.
This was done this week.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, this was, this is very new.
Okay.
What we determined last month was that the deed restriction may be the answer to resolving this one location issue, rather than changing the rules on CR all over the city, the deed restriction, and it depends on the property owner, they're willing to do it, they hired their own attorney to prepare this document. It, and we, we actually postponed a vote on this till this month, if we could get the deed restriction. And now that we have it, it resolves. Now, Mr. Moses is not in the group that is comfortable with a C-store being there, and we respect that highly. But the thought of the commissioners and planning was that the deed restriction may resolve the major issue within the size of this.
Well, in looking at this, the deed restriction takes care of private clubs, but number two, this is only saying that you want a live person to drink the alcohol on premises, but it does not prevent them from selling it.
Correct.
So that's.
But the point is, they can sell that now. I mean, they can sell beer and wine out of that store.
Right. Well, that's true, that's true. That much is true, but now they're wanting to build a new store.
Right.
Okay.
And they were willing to put a million dollars of improvement into Oakland Avenue.
I tell you, this is a very unfortunate situation. I think we're still saying that even though they can sell the beer and wine now, prior to that, we did not have the senior citizen building there, that wasn't there at that time, correct?
So your concern is having the senior citizens go over there and buy an alcohol?
Well, we're concerned about the beer and wine being sold there, that close to senior citizens.
So you want to put these people out of business?
I'm not trying to do anything, I'm just talking about what we have listed. You know, it's not me, I'm just going by our rules, I didn't make them, right? I mean, is that not correct?
Well, you missed last month, and we went through the same discussion. I wish you could have been here for that, because this, this has been a very contentious request. This is our third month on, maybe the fourth, I can't remember. And we have narrowed down, we've listened to, we've had public hearings, we've listened to many neighbors in Oakland Avenue area. There was a group last week that said they'll be perfectly happy to have this deed restriction. That was Mr. Waters. Mr. Waters told us after the meeting, he said the deed restriction was the perfect answer.
But my, my, I haven't finished. See, let me just be plain, okay? When you write something differently, and the meanings are still the same, I really have a problem if you're trying to tell me the same thing in a different way. I don't appreciate that too much. What we have said and what I've heard from the community is, they don't want the beer and wine being sold there at this time.
So how would you stop that?
Well, if they're going to keep the building as is, then fine. If they want to build a new building according to the rules that's in place now, they can't build a new building and continue to sell the beer and wine, because that was grandfathered in. And since it was grandfathered in, by my rules now, the city's rule, if you want to build a new building, that is no longer grandfathered in.
And you're right about the rules, but they can make slow improvements, they can replace the roof.
Well, if they're willing to do that, then fine. I don't have an argument, I have no argument with that, because that's what the rules said they can do, right?
Well, this right here is not changing the rules. This, what, what was proposed is that we change the rules for every piece of property that's on CR to accommodate or to eliminate certain things. And that would affect every property on Second Loop, on Evans Street. So we said, why should we punish property owners all of the city for this one Oakland Avenue issue? And we understand, you know, everybody's point, but the deed restriction was the one way of, because most of the, well, I can say most, some of the crowd last month didn't want a nightclub there, they didn't want, what were some of the other things they didn't want there? They didn't want a liquor store there. And, and so we're trying to accommodate everybody, we're trying to be fair to, they've owned that business for 30 years, they've been there for 30 years.
No, not 30 years.
30 years.
30 years?
The business has been there ever since I was about 10 to 13 years old, so it's been there a long time. You see, like I say, my, my issue with this is you've come back to us with the same identical thing.
No, it's not the same.
Number two is, number two is the.
Onsite consumption.
No, not onsite consumption.
That's what number two is.
Right, but.
That keeps, that keeps a nightclub, it keeps.
But it does not prevent them from selling beer and wine. And the folks that go in there and sell the beer and wine, the only thing they would do is go get the beer and wine and go across the street. Now, let me say this much, I have personally called the police department and asked them to go to that area and do something about the man that was sitting there with their beer and wine, sitting there drinking it.
That's against the law.
Yeah, but they were doing it. And so I asked them, you know, if, if they could stop these men from doing that, because the little children was out there playing, and it's a community area, and, and it was the cat team, so they started having the patrol car sit across the street to kind of keep that under control. I don't know what the solution is, but I think what the group was saying, the people that live in that neighborhood, they've said they don't want the beer and wine being sold. And since we're here to represent that area, the only thing we can do is tell you what they're saying. And I don't have the solution, but number two is not the solution when it comes to them selling the beer and wine, to say, well, alcohol, we can, we know that, you know what beer and wine and alcohol is and liquor? I don't drink it, but I know about all that stuff. So, so when, well, you never know, but so far, I haven't. But again, yeah, I don't want to prolong this, but this right here is not saying that they will no longer sell the beer and wine if they build a new store.
They can sell beer and wine currently, correct?
Yes.
So they can do that for the next 30 years.
Right, they can, they can.
And all of us here?
Yes, those two gentlemen right there.
You stand up, please, sir. Just a quick question for you.
I do have to, I do have to make one motion. We have to have them come to the podium and, and you have to ask me.
Sorry, Mr. Trevin, Matt, I'd like to, I'd like to just ask the property owners a question.
If we do that, then we have to bring them to the podium so it can be recorded.
Okay.
And this is not a public hearing, Mr. Dudley, are we allowed to?
Maybe you can answer my question, how about that? Since I wasn't here last time. Sorry, guys, can you tell me exactly again, how much these gentlemen are going to spend on Oakland Avenue? How much money?
They say 800,000 to a million dollars. And part of that is a washing, laundry operation.
Okay, since you asked it, let me ask.
Well, you ask me if you can.
Can I ask you?
Mr. Chairman, can I speak?
Can I speak, Chairman?
Yes.
They came here three different times with three different answers, what they're going to put in that spot. Have you seen a plan, what they're going to put in that spot? Or you just see the sketch of a piece of land?
Well, Mr. Moses, would you hire an architect and spend $12,000 if you're not sure if you can build that?
Well, see, you're.
They don't hire their architect until they have approval.
My question is, is to you. If I'm going to build, like, I'm going to build a house, I got a piece of land, I have that, I'd have all that design ready to present to you, but what I'm going to put on that piece of land, am I right or wrong?
Well, the key word is you already had the land.
They, pardon?
The key word is you already had the land, and it was appropriate to put a house on. They've got the land, but it's not appropriate for them to rebuild, so they're not going to spend the $12,000 or whatever.
That's being part of the million they want to spend.
They will, once they get the approval, they're not going to take the chance.
You, you, what you're doing, which I don't like, you started, we started off with the whole CR district.
Right.
When we started with this, with this, we ask you, we don't, we don't want the CR district, we just want Oakland Avenue.
Exactly.
And now, now, what you've done to do, you put this on the agenda, feed it down to me, want me to come here and vote for something you want to throw on me all of a sudden? I'm not agreeing with this, I never did. If they want to build one on your corner, do that, but not on my corner. That's the way I feel. If they want to spend a million dollars, they came a plan, up here with a plan, to show them what they're going to put in that.
That's not the way it works, Mr. Moses.
Well, they've been building that, build property.
If they already have the property.
They have the property.
Mr. Bigley right here is a developer, would you spend money on architectural, if, I'm sorry, I can't. Okay, you know, the thing that frustrates me a little bit, and Ms. Hines, I'm going to address this to you, we can't, we tried to find the perfect answer or what's fair for both parties, we're trying to find that common ground. And we get close, we get close, and then the common ground, we felt, last month, was the deed restriction. Ms. Hines, no fault to you, you weren't here the past two months that we addressed this.
And. I was here in the beginning, though, the other meeting I missed, and all the.
Well, last month was a. By the way, this isn't Brew versus the Commission, Brew versus the world. I'm trying to speak on behalf of the applicant, and also on what the commissioners are looking to try to achieve, and, and the audience is trying to achieve. I'm sorry, that was, so we thought we had the answer. And, well, it was never an answer for you, Mr. Moses, but everybody else on this board or this commission voted more favorably for trying to get the deed restriction last month. You were the only descending vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. So consequently, you voted? We had two numbers here that felt that we would postpone it to this month and see if the owners will be willing to deed restrict, those very same words, onsite consumption and no nightclubs. That was discussed last month. And the thing that's frustrating is now, we think we have a quick up and down vote, and now Ms. Hines, who's just now, you know, voicing her concern, we're back to ground zero again. So it's very frustrating for me.
Right. Well, since you addressed this to me, my answer is this, I'm not here representing Ms. Hines. I understand business, I understand that the, the city is trying to grow the city, and I understand that business help to pay taxes, and taxes help to run the city, I understand all of that. I'm just here representing the people that live in the Oakland Avenue area, and I'm just relating to you their wishes, nothing personal, and I'm here too long. You know, accepted things that I agreed with, and sometimes that I didn't. I'm just relating to you what the people in the neighborhood is saying they don't want. Now, how do we get out of this? I don't know, but I'm just a messenger, saying what they have said to me.
Well, we, we've been hearing that for three months, and we understand that, but nobody.
And I would like to say, I've only missed one meeting, I was here when this started, and it just didn't come last.
Thank you for correcting that.
Yeah.
Some reason this thing's been going on for so long, it seems like four months, but.
Well, the only thing we have to do is vote it, right? We're going to vote it up or vote it down, that's all we can do.
May I speak, ma'am, just?
Yes.
Oh, my concern, my concern with it is not so much the owners, but, okay, we say that this store has been there for over 30 years. Then my concern is that if this store is selling beer or wine, and not just this store, any store, anywhere, if they were selling beer and wine, and, and, but I'm just going to use Oakland Avenue, in this case, in the community center, because this is the area we talking about. If we have a community center there, and we have a senior city there, and then we have a store that's across the street selling beer and wine and cigarettes or whatever else, then if our concern is that when our children or our seniors are going to leave out of that store, I mean, out of that center, and go over there and purchase beer and wine, then I think we need to look back at ourselves and look back at the community for those answers. I just feel like saying that, that because that store is there in that location, you know, that, that, that's just the cause of the demise of the, of the neighborhood. I just think that's giving them too much power, because on the other hand, you know, you have residents in that same area that, that they, they drank and, or, and they smoked, maybe they don't go to that store, but they going to the IGA or the Piggly Wiggly of the street, and they still buying and they're consuming it. So I just feel like when we, you know, just to say that, because that building is there and selling those products, that, that is just destroying the neighborhoods and, you know, and, and it hurts our center, that's just, then we need to do something else as a community and as a center.
Can, can I, can I speak? Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Were you through?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, if you're done. Yeah. We have gone around and around and around on this subject, around four times. We have heard the complaints over and over and over again from various members of the community. But I think this becomes a question of fairness, it really does, it's fairness. These people own a business where they are currently doing all of the things legally that you're describing. We've taken into consideration the complaints from the community, we have painstakingly listened to all of them. The applicants have responded to those complaints, and the majority of those complaints were, I don't want a private club, I don't want liquor in my community, and I don't want somebody to be able to buy a beer and drink it onsite. Those were the predominant complaints, the most consistent.
Those were the predominant complaints, the most consistent complaints from day one. These folks, we, we talked about this last month, we provided that feedback to the applicants. They went to the city and said, how can we satisfy, what can we do to satisfy this complaint? City sat down with them and said, well, here's the idea that was suggested. There was, I don't recall there being any opposition to the idea of having a deed restriction. The city communicated what that might look like to the applicants, they went and hired an attorney. And paid an attorney to produce the document, just to, to alleviate these concerns that we've had. And they come tonight, we moved the bar, they moved, they met the bar. And now we're gonna move it again, we're, we're talking about moving it again, and I, I'm sorry, I, I just don't think it's fair. And we, as a body, have got to do better. I mean, we've got to look out for the community, but we gotta look out for all the community, not just our neighbors. But our business owners in our community as well. And I don't wanna lose fight, I don't wanna lose sight of the fact. That I, and I can't help but think that some of us are trying to throw the baby out with the bathwater. Because I, I said this last month, I'm in the convenience store business, my family's been in it for seventy-five years. The convenience store industry provides an extremely necessary service to all communities. Alcohol sales are a very small percentage of that. But, but the most important parts are the, are the milk, and the bread. And the snacks, and the meals, and all of the things that a convenience store, by definition, is convenient. It has to be near and easy for people to access. And in that community, where some people aren't able to drive. Are able to walk to a convenience store to pick up those items that make their lives easier. These gentlemen are not opening a liquor store, they are not opening a, um, a beer store, an alcohol store. They're opening a convenience store. And alcohol represents a very small portion of that. The overall halo effect to that community is so positive. When you consider all of the other items that they sell, and the improvement in the money that they're going to invest. It's, it's just staggering, and I think we, as a body, we have got to consider that. And fair is fair, and we moved the goalpost on these folks, and they've met it. And, and now we're talking about moving it again, and I just don't think it's fair, and I don't think it's right. And I, I hope that you will reconsider, and I understand your concerns, but please don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Let these guys have an opportunity to make an improvement to that community, and, um, and, and allow them to do business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, would anyone else like to make a comment?
I understand what everybody's saying, and to me, everybody got their own opinion. For me, I don't like the idea they building a new store. And gonna sell the wine, and the beer, and whatever, I'm against that. I feel like this, I know everybody's talking about the money they can bring in. But to me, look all the trouble they gonna bring in also. Could anybody that don't live over there, they can say what they wanna say, they don't live over there. You know, I rather for it to be grandfathered, leave it like it is, they're still selling the beer and wine, the beer certain, that is my opinion.
I, I, I'm, she's still talking.
Let me finish. What I'm saying is, everybody, I've been on this commission for eleven years. And I know, I have seen some of our commissioners went another way, didn't help the community. And to me, seem like, this because everybody got their own opinion, it's so bad. But to me, my opinion is my opinion, you know, uh, like, it ain't nothing personal. I'm gonna live over there, I understand what some of them saying, but they can bring in eight hundred thousand dollars or whatever. Sometimes it ain't all about money. You know, it ain't about money to me, it's about, we work hard to get that center. They knew that, when the center was coming up, so they still wanna say, they're willing, I'm beer and wine. Leave it like it is, let them settle. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Um, and, and I, I, I appreciate that, considering, I respect your opinion. But, but the issue for me, when you say, I would rather leave it like it is, and let it continue to sell beer and wine. That's confusing to me, because what we're talking about doing is shining a light. On the, re, on that corner, on that property, we're talking about putting a magnifying glass on it. Where the folks that you talk about, that drink the alcohol on the street corner, who hide in the shadows. Can't hide in the shadows anymore. There's a light shine there, and it's. It, 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 I mean, it, it brings attention to the site. Rather than allows things that you're concerned about to occur in the darkness, which is what's happening right now. And so, will it be a busier place? Absolutely, I would certainly hope so. I'll sell a lot more Pepsi Colas, and beer, and wine, and milk, and candy, and, and, and. Be a positive hot dogs to the community, absolutely, that's the point. That's the point. And so, I think that. I think that we've approved this, as it was requested several months ago. I mean, we all approved this, with one dissenting vote. And. We were asked to take another look at it, and see if we could make it more accommodating. And I, I think ultimately through this painstaking process, we've done that. And. They've come back and said, okay, I'll, we, we understand, and here's, here's what we propose to alleviate those concerns. I've already, and I'm not gonna look you up yet, yeah, but. Feel like, a little bit like Charlie Brown and Lucy, and, and put, pull it all out. This Charlie Brown's ready to kick it, it's, it's, um. At, at some point, we, we've gotta satisfy ourselves, we've done enough, and allow these gentlemen to do what they wanna do. And control it, recognizing some of the concerns that communities had, and, and control that, 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 that piece of property. They are sacrificing for indefinitely their ability to do. They may wanna do fifty years down the line with that property, I think that is a supreme sacrifice. Um, I would be hard pressed to wanna put a deed restriction on this property that I own, because I don't think it's gonna happen down the road. But they're willing to do that, because they feel so strongly about what they wanna do, and they wanna get this done. We, that idea came up, no one dissented, um, they did it, now they're here. Now we're, we're, we're having trouble with it, so. Thank you, I, I just, I'm just asking the commissioners to, to look within themselves. And, and try to find an opportunity to, to help get this thing done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moses, or Miss Hines is next.
Um, we did vote earlier with this, however, since that time, a lot of the community's people. Made their wishes known to me, that they did not want the beer and wine, so. And, um, if the beer and wine was not so important to these gentlemen, we wouldn't be here. So when you say the convenience store, and it was good for milk and bread, and. If the beer and wine wasn't, uh, one of the moneymakers for the convenience store, it wouldn't be all this debate. Just go on without it, so let's make no mistake about that, we all know how much money people spend in beer and wine. So, that's the issue, that's always been the issue, they didn't want it so beer. That, as I stated earlier, I'm just a messenger, saying to you what the community have said to me. And at this moment, um. Their wishes known, you all have made your wishes known, that is what I need to do at this time. Pass, we vote something up, or we vote it down, because if we sit here all night long. I'm not telling you when we're, another, what my personal views are, I'm telling you what the folks have said to me that they didn't want. And that's a part of, of my job, so to speak, of being here. So, all the long discussions, it's not going to change people's mind, one way or the other. So I think we just need to vote, and if it pass, then it's okay by me. If it fails, it's okay by me, because that's what we've always done, we've brought the issues here, we've expressed ourselves, and we voted. So, Mr. Chairman, I think it's about time that we no longer waste a whole lot of more time on this. And we just voted up or down.
Sounds you've always been the wise one, she, uh, she corrected me many times on Robert's rules. And I've always appreciated her for that, I think you're supposed to say, call for the question. Well, I, I would like to say something before, um, that takes place, there, there are a couple of. Circumstances on this, the city council, as it turns out, did not send it back to the planning commission. They, they charged the planning department to see if they can find something that would work, that made more sense on Oakland Avenue. So it didn't come back to us, believe it or not, it is not our baby. Um, we could vote this up or down, and, and we could send it back to, to the council and say. You can't make it better than what we voted on a while back, and y'all have to take it up with your constituents. Um, this is kinda like a hot potato, uh, everybody's, they handed it off as quickly as they could. And we've been, we've been tossing that potato for three months now, and, uh, I'm ready to make some french fries. You know? Um, so if we do, do the vote, up or down, it's, it's not gonna pass. Um, and I will tell you that, um, or it may. At that point, we also have another item on the agenda that, uh, attempts to. We have to vote on, uh, correcting that CR district for all of the properties. We'd already, as a body, said that that's not fair to change all of the city of Florence, and that zoning designation for just Oakland Avenue. So, I thought we'd already gone beyond that, but we have to vote on that tonight, which, um, we've all in the past. And I think even Mr. Moses, I can't remember Mr. Moses, voted changing every property that's in that particular zoning district. To accommodate this, so that will be possibly voted down. And then there we are, uh, and then, Mr. Dudley, um, can we make a motion to? Send it back to city council and say, w- we've just done everything with it we can?
I believe that in, as a part of one of your, one of the motions being made on these two issues. I, I mean, or as both of these issues, then I think that directive can be made, yes.
Great thought. This call for the, okay, I've got a, a, a call for the question. Um, is there any discuss, now, we've already had discussion, all those in favor? Of the deed restriction in approving it for these two gentlemen, raise your hand. One, two, three, four. All those opposed? The deed restrictions carried. And.
That's fine.
You still gonna give me a hug?
Yeah, no, no problem. It's not personal to me, I represent those folks since I did.
I understand. Okay, so, what has just happened, which is, you know. Is that, um, your request has been approved along with the deed restriction. The deed restriction goes into effect at what point you said earlier.
We, we would require them to record that at the time of rezoning. Before the, but, but prior to the, um, rezoning being executed.
Okay.
We'll, we'll write that into the staff report.
All right, all right, on to the next, um, agenda item. This will be, uh, PC twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two. This is that, um, over encompassing change to, uh, the zoning that is similar to what's on Oakland Avenue. Um, we have, as a body, I'm not telling you how to vote now, but as a body felt that it was unfair to change all the other properties. Just because of Oakland Avenue, and the PC twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two was the planning department's. Uh, attempt to accommodate the city council, and say, maybe this might fix it. Um, but as a body, and, and I think even out in the audience, there was disagreement with the fairness of that. So, PC twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two is not gonna be a public hearing, but, uh, would you report on that, please, Mr. Trevor?
Yes, um, I think you've done a good job of describing where, where it is, we have discussed it, um, at length, over the past two meetings. It was deferred, uh, at the previous two meetings, and, you know, it essentially put in place. You know, extra conditions or, or conditional requirements within the CR district, and it was quite comprehensive. And, uh, the, at the time, we, we were trying to be very thorough. In, in addressing potential nuisances associated with some new, some uses. Um, especially associated with, with alcohol consumption, um, and particularly on-site alcohol consumption. Because we know that those uses, uh, have, have potential nuisances to, depending on the location and, and, and the management of those facilities. Uh, so, in doing so, we had written up those rules, um, to address that. Um, I do think there was concern, um, from members that it would have, um, you know. I guess indirect effects on other parcels within the city. Um, there's a lot of, uh, CR zoning along Court Street, um, along Evan Street, along the Second Loop Corridor. Um, and even, um, you know, a little bit along Oakland Avenue, in addition to, uh, the parcels in question. Um, and a few other areas within the city, uh, where these type uses, um, you know. And, and we still have the ability to, um, you know, negate or mitigate these nuisances through our zoning order. That's through looking at specific, um, you know, the characteristic of the neighborhood. And adjacent properties through buffering and such as they redevelop. So, um, I think, you know, considering all, um, you know, staff had, I think originally. You know, as we always do with our text amendments, because we think they're, they're pretty good, we, we recommend approval. Um, but I think in this case, I, I think staff would recommend, um, not approving things in this case. Um, and/or, uh, giving us direction to, to take a look at it, and giving us some specific directions for this zoning district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, any questions to staff? Um, hearing none, I will, uh, call for a motion.
A move, if we decline this, this option, um, I think it is one that most of us. Held our nose on, and, uh, not make a change to the whole city, to try to accommodate one piece of property, and so. Let me get my sense in, so I vote that we decline.
And we have a motion to decline, hold a second. Sorry, motion of the second, um, the motion of the second are to not approve, um, this item. Twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, and we can do verbally this time, all those in favor say aye. Like signs, nay. Wow, that is enjoyable, we have unanimous. Okay, um, thank you, uh, we'll go into the next item, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, this is a sketch plan review request. Planning review please, and how are you to see?
Thank you. I wanted to let you know, so we do have the applicants for this, the Pine Street, um, rezoning are on. I wanted to let you know, so we do have the applicants for this, the Pine Street, um, rezoning are on Zoom as well. All right. This is a request for sketch plan review to construct a townhouse, um, development on six parcels that are located on, um, two parcels on the north side, two on the south side of Pine Street, and two on the corner of Railroad and Pine Street. And here they are in the vicinity map, the six parcels that are in, outlined in red. And all six of those are owned by the city at this point. And the city is interested in, is working with a consultant to develop, um, townhouses on these six parcels. As you may recall, a couple of months ago, uh, you voted to, um, approved rezoning of those, uh, four on the north side of Pine Street from Neighborhood Conservation six point two to Central Business District, which does permit townhouses, whereas the NC, um, designation did not. So that has already gone through and been approved by city council. And the future land use map is for a, um, central business district, um, urban type of use. And, uh, townhouses falls within that, the attached, um, single-family housing. This is the site plan and the ordinance calls that requires that to, uh, townhouses, um, be subdivisible. Um, these will be owner occupied, and so at the time of sale, the, um, developer needs to be able to subdivide each parcel out individually and get, get its untaxed net number. They'll be individually, um, but they will have common space in the green spaces and the driveways. Um, and so each of these units will have a one-car garage, and then will have a second, as required by the ordinance, will have a second parking space. Uh, most of them will be in the little driveway that they have. The parcel will include the driveway and then the drop, the, the individual driveway, and then the common driveway, um, and access points will be in common space. So the, um, staff has looked at it and they do conform to the law and building standards of the ordinance. Um, because this is in the art and cultural overlay district, the design review board has also looked at the design of the, uh, layout and of the buildings themselves and has granted their approval on it as well. The staff will be working with them in the development plan stage, dealing with stormwater issues and such, um, items as that. But we're satisfied that it does meet their ordinance requirements for subdivision and for, uh, townhouses. And that's what you all are here to approve is the sketch plan stage of it. So that completes staff's report.
Ms. Lane, thank you. Any questions, staff? Um, hearing none, I'll call for a motion. We, we approve. I have a motion to approve that second. I have a motion in the second to approve is submitted. Uh, any discussion? I'll call for the vote verbally. All those in favor say aye. Light signs nay. I just have it. Thank y'all. Twenty twenty-one, that's twenty-five. This is on the sketch plan review. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are y'all doing?
Good, thank you. Before you start, I, I have been very rude in not, um, introducing our newest commissioner for, and I apologize to you, sir, for not doing when we had the biggest crisis. I, I, I'll perform it. I already is. This is Dr. Mark Lawhorn, and he is, uh, our newest commissioner. And, uh, we're certainly blessed to have him on, on our commission, and, um, he's been intimately involved with downtown and, um, in other areas of the city. So, again, welcome and, uh, apologize for the not having you sooner on the agenda. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So this is for sketch plan approval of Wildburg Run, uh, phases eight through eleven. Here's the vicinity map, we're off of, uh, Alligator Road, and it's just a continuation of the Wildburg Run. So the zoning map, it is zone RG three. Here's a future land use map, uh, which does put it as, um, as an initial suburban. Here is the, uh, updated sketch plan. I believe we just had the engineer add some updated contour lines. Just changed some of the wording to make sure that, that it was legible for staff. So this is a fifty-nine acre development. It will be eighty-five single-family homes, just single-family homes. Uh, city water and sewer are available, and, um, the developer will go and construct, uh, the water and sewer lines. Um, the development plan will be required, which will have more details, and that would be approved by city staff, including planning and engineering. Um, and it is in compliance with Unified Development Ordinance, except for a cul-de-sac variance request, uh, which we'll get to in a few slides. So because they have fifty-nine percent of the overall, um, phase as open space, um, they are granted a smaller average lot size. They're able to get, um, warehouses, um, on the land. Uh, so, yeah, smaller lot sizes, greater density. Um, and this zoning district does permit single-family and townhome construction, but it will just be single-family. All right, and here's the variance request. This is Gold Carpet Drive, um, just the length of the cul-de-sac will exceed the city's ordinance of four hundred feet. They're requesting a variance of six hundred and twenty feet. And the four hundred feet in the Unified Development Ordinance is influenced by, um, fire code. And the thought is, the smaller distance you have to, to turn around, you know, if you're facing the wrong direction and the house is on fire, and you have to turn around, the shortest distance would be, uh, best. So this, this would exceed it by two hundred and twenty feet, and that's the variance request. And that does conclude staff's report and the applicant's in the crowd.
They've asked for the variance, and I know that in the past, I can't remember which one of the commissioners, um, we, we give the variance request quite often. Is, is there? And, and city, um, planning has approved this without, uh, explained to us why you put from four hundred to six hundred. I'm, I'm not saying you're, I'm against it personally. I just, all you've done is say that's the request.
Right, yeah. The, the variance request of this, if this instance, um, is due to the geography of the site. It's quite low, um, there's not, um, you, you know, he had to cross a, a lower area here, not with the bridge, but with, with a culvert that he's gonna build up, um, in order to get to that point. So, um, it's geography of the site that's dictating this, uh, in this case. Uh, without having, he wouldn't be able to connect, um, back into the subdivision, um, very easily in, in this case. So it's due to the geography of the site, and we did consult with the fire marshal.
I was gonna ask.
Uh, we, we did consult with the fire marshal, um, and he is, he did approve the variance or, or, you know, say that he was okay with it, yes.
Just my own application, uh, if someone else doesn't have a geographical, uh, issue, would planning approve the six hundred feet versus the four hundred?
Potentially. We, uh, we always consult with our, our fire, fire marshal, uh, because each case is a little different. Um, I know planning commission has, has asked that we maybe look at that and, and extend that, and we've talked to the fire marshal about it. And at this, I guess at this state, he's not comfortable with permanently changing the code. He, he, he does like to have that discretion, um, based upon, you know, the uniqueness of each site, um, in order to make that determination.
Any other questions, staff?
I have a question. Why is the fire marshal comfortable with this, you know, the two hundred feet? Uh, particularly if the culvert's washed out, you have people that are stuck there, they can't get to them.
Right, the, the, um, we do require connectivity when there's, uh, thirty lots in that instance. And, um, it would be fifteen in this case, so it didn't cross that threshold. I, I believe if it had been a greater number of lots, he would not make up.
But why aren't you comfortable with that?
Um, well, I mean, it, it, it just seems that the fire marshal has, um, the ability to approve what he wants to approve. And there's no standard of, of going, okay, you know, this subdivision versus that subdivision. Which I personally have been denied this, this variance, uh. But, um, I think it's logical for the washout there that, that, um,
And the fire marshal is ultimately responsible for this.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I, I think it's actually, uh, just because of the potential, uh, contours there, I, I don't think the developer has a choice.
Any other questions, staff? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion. All the, okay, call for a motion. I'm trying to get out of yours.
I move, I move, we approve.
Okay, got a motion to approve that second.
That's it.
A motion in the second to approve is submitted. Any discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Light signs nay. I just have it. Thank you. Okay. This is, um, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six. Request to name the road leading to the South Florence High School stadium.
Yes, sir.
Staff report, please.
All right, that, um, as you know, all of the high schools have built, um, new stadiums. And this affects the one, um, for South Florence High School. And there is a, an entrance road going to accessing the stadium, which is that yellow line. And again, this is mainly a life safety thing, um, so that emergency vehicles would have, be specific, would know specifically where to go. And as of your packets, we do not have a proposal, proposed name, but we did, do have one now. Um, South Florence Parkway has been proposed by the school, uh, district. And we checked it against, uh, the street names we wanted in similar, so staff, um, agreed that that would be acceptable.
Should Parkway?
Yes, South Florence Parkway. So that completes staff's report. Yes, sir. So there won't be any residences along it. It's mainly just to identify stadium.
And just, just as a side note, the planning commission did crush their hopes and dreams, because they did want to name it Bruins Boulevard. However, there is already a Bruins line.
Oh.
Whenever we got names that are very similar or, or identical, you know, it causes nine-one-one confusion. But they understood, so.
Yeah, I just told the chairman, I, I might have come up with something more intimidating, because I was leading with the football stadium.
Yeah.
I'm kidding.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, uh, any other questions? Um, I'll call for the motion.
Question approved.
That's nice. Do I have a second? Second. Um, we have a motion of second to approve is submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Light signs nay, and I just have unanimous. Um, on the new agenda that just passed out, uh, that twenty twenty-one, twenty-seven, we've already addressed. And so, this is where, near Mr. Moses.
I'm moving during there.
Land.